All right, how's everyone this evening?
Good.
All right, Jamie, you ready to go?
I am.
All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting in order then. First item be roll call.
Alderman Bass.
Here.
Alderman Cleaver.
Here.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Stratton.
Here.
Alderman Totten.
Here.
Alderman West.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, next item be the approval of the agenda.
No changes, Mayor.
Okay. See no proclamations, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Just remember, make sure when you make a motion in a second that you say your name along with it, so we can have that for the record. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I'm motion from Alderman West, do I have a second?
Second, Stratton.
All right, second, Alderman Stratton, any discussion? Hearing none, all fair please say aye.
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 All pose same sign. Six zero. Next item under previous business, we have liquor license for QuickTrip. And then we talked about this previously, so this will be our second time talking about this, so we will need a vote this evening on this. Jamie, do we have everything we need?
We're still missing the county liquor license, but I don't believe the county has been open for them to get that yet. But that's it.
Yeah, I know they've been working on limited capacities, so they probably haven't got around to this. So we don't, we don't need that though before we approve ours, correct?
Nope, I just won't issue it until I have it.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions in regard to liquor license? All right, if not, entertain a motion to approve the liquor license for QuickTrip.
So moved.
Then most of Alderman West, do I have a second?
Second, Alderman Cleaver.
Second Alderman Cleaver, any discussion? Right, hearing none, all fair please say aye.
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 All pose same sign. Okay, pass the six zero. See no new business or presentations, move on to public hearings. First public hearing we have is Craig Ruckstall for CR Aerospace LLC.
Mayor, I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Trozen to give an overview of the request.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board. Do you see my, the, the picture of the map, aerial map? Jamie's it up, okay, good.
Yep, I see it.
So the CR Aerospace LLC, DBA, Avid Air International is requesting a change of zoning from District C2, General Business, to District M1, Light Industrial, on a 3.1 acre tract of land. This 3.1 acre tract of land is generally located north of Arty-Mize Road at the northwest intersection of Pavilion and Golf Field Drive. This is the tract that we are referencing right here that's labeled as Discovery Church. Avid Air International has been in business for over 28 years and leased Summit. Avid Air has been successful in overhauling and repairing compressor case assemblies in aircraft helicopters. The business is custom manufacturing. Custom manufacturing is an allowable land use in District M1. The property is currently zoned District C2. There's a metal building and paved parking lot on the property. The building had previously been used for by a church. The parking area has enough spaces to accommodate Avid Air's employees as well as patrons. I'm referring to the surrounding land uses in the area. The property to the east and south are zoned District M1. They are, the property to the south is vacant. The property to the east is occupied by brass armadillo. Interstate 70 is north of the site. The property to the west is undeveloped and located within the city limits of Blue Springs. In reviewing the preferred land use plan within the 2014 comprehensive plan, the plan illustrates this area to be business park. Proposed rezoning and land use would be consistent with the character and intent of the preferred land use plan for the city. Public notice was given in the examiner regarding this public hearing, as well as letters were sent to property owners of record with the county within 185 feet of the proposed change of zoning. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on March 11th, 2020. The commission unanimously recommended approval for the change in zoning. Staff recommends approval of the change of zoning from District C2, General Business, to District M1, Light Industrial. And Mr. Mayor, the applicant is online.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Alderman Cleaver, I'm assuming then that you're gonna tear down the existing structure that's there and build a new building, is that correct?
Craig, do you wanna go ahead and respond?
Please unmute yourself, or Jamie, you might have to unmute him.
Can you hear Craig Ruckstall?
I can now.
Okay, we are not going to dismantle that building, we're gonna use it as is. With interior modifications and electrical upgrades.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay. Ken, how are we going about public hearing on this?
So we have the ability, and Jamie, you can step in here. Where if somebody would like to speak, they can request it.
Okay.
So it'll basically be the same format, just through video.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against this project during the public hearing? You seen anybody Jamie wants to? Nope, all right, so we'll close the public hearing then. I'll move on to the second public hearing we have for Missouri-made marijuana LLC.
Mayor, members of the board, again, I'll turn this over to Mr. Trozen to give an overview of the request.
Thank you, Ken. Again, can you see the map, an aerial photo, aerial map for MMM? Okay. So Missouri-made marijuana LLC is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a medical marijuana cultivation facility on approximately six acres. These six acres is generally located at the east end of the South Outer Belt Road. This is the south bout, South Outer Belt Road. Interstate I-70 would be at the top of this map. Penny's Concrete Batch Facility is located right where I'm circling on the map. The property is owned by Penny's Concrete Incorporated. They've given approval to submit the application. Well, what this conditional use permit would do would allow the operation of a medical marijuana cultivation facility. This is under section 425.050 of the city's code of ordinances. As you recall, several months ago, the Board of Aldermen approved changes to the code and regulations for land use that would be consistent with the constitutional amendment that was passed by the voters of Missouri. A medical marijuana cultivation facility is a facility licensed by the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services. A copy of the permit that was issued to Missouri-made marijuana was included in your packet. The cultivation of medical marijuana will take place in three fully enclosed buildings on site. Phase one will entail the construction of one building, which would be in this general facility on the site. Phase two will then include the constructions of the two additional buildings on the site. Each of these buildings contain approximately 28,000 square feet. The Penny's Concrete owns over 26 area in the general area. As I mentioned before, the conditional use permit would be basically on six acres. The Penny's Concrete facility will still remain on the tract to the south of the proposed cultivation facility. The property is zoned District M1, Light Industrial. A medical marijuana cultivation facility may be located as a conditional use in District M1 upon compliance with the provisions of the city's ordinance. The cultivation facility is more than 500 feet to any other medical marijuana facility, which is one of the requirements of both the state as well as the city's ordinance, as well as it is definitely significantly more than 750 feet from any existing elementary or secondary school, daycare, or church. The reviewing the plans that were submitted by MMM, originally they proposed to extend the South Outer Belt Road along the north end of the property. However, after reviewing these plans with Missouri Department of Transportation staff, the applicant was advised in writing that this would not be approved, and therefore what they did was change their plan and are proposing to build a public street, which would then be on the west side of the proposed development. Now, this public street will be built to a collector standard, which is a 36-foot back-to-back, from curb to curb collector street, and will be constructed out of concrete. Now, this collector street will dead-end to the entrance into Penny's Concrete. The site plan also illustrated a nine-foot tall chain link fence with four strands of security wire at top. Referencing the section in the city code pertaining to fence height, the maximum fence height in District M1 is eight foot. Barbed wire is permitted in M1 district only on brackets over six feet high for security purposes. Now, understanding that security is a high priority for this facility, there are other fence materials that can be used, which would be aesthetic alternative to the chain link. Staff recommends an eight-foot wrought iron or similar material type spike-type fence, like the one in the picture that was a part of the staff report. With the addition of a public street on the west side of the property. This is the landscape plan. This also then becomes a front yard with this new public street. Therefore, in the staff's recommendation, you'll find that additional landscape material will need to be planted along that west property line, as similar to what's illustrated that will be planted along the north property line. Since Buildings 1 and 3 are within 300 feet of the right-of-way for I-70, the exterior walls visible from the right-of-way must comply with the city's code regulations. They have submitted elevation drawings that propose building materials consisting of a brick rains coat with the EFS panels on the, on the sides that would be facing I-70. These proposed building materials would be in compliance with the city code requirement. The Central Jackson County Fire Protection District has reviewed the submitted plans. The district has provided comments that the applicant has agreed to adhere to. The applicant must also provide a plan in regards to how they're going to provide a system that prevents odors of marijuana from being detected by a person beyond the boundary of the lot. There was a supplemental packet that was included in your application packet that talks about that they are proposed to utilize a custom air cleaning system to mitigate that cultivation odors. They also will have air quality engineers who will perform air monitoring and ventilation studies to confirm the system's effectiveness, as well as ensure that they are in compliance with the code. The applicant also provided a security plan for review. That was reviewed by Chief Bill and his executive staff chief, and, and his executive staff approved that plan. The applicant also provided a waste disposal plan, which is in compliance with the city code, as well as state requirements regarding surrounding land use of the area. The area to the north is Interstate 70. To the west, the property is zoned District M1 and contains the Mo Country Bar. To the south, Penny's Concrete Batch Plant. To the east, the property is vacant and also zoned District M1. Public notice was given in the examiner and by letter to property owners of record within 185 feet of this property. There are five conditions that are proposed in the ordinance, and the applicant is agreeable to those conditions. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on March 11th. The commission voted unanimously to recommend approval subject to the five conditions presented by staff. Are there any questions?
Anyone have any questions from the board?
How many, this Alderman Cleaver, do we know how many employees will be on-site? They plan to employ here?
So, my name is Stephen Lucas, I'm an attorney with Rouse Fretz White Goss, and representing MMM. And I don't recall offhand the exact, I wanna give you the exact number, so I'm here with the team, we've got our engineer and our architect and the owner as well. So guys, feel, feel free to chime in if you remember the exact number, because I don't wanna misstate a fact.
When did they plan on starting this?
This is Jed Clausen with Phelps Engineering. I just wanna follow up on that last question and answer this one. We had 15 employees per shift on the, on the first building. And then each additional building since the same size and operation would have 15 additional employees each, so that'd be 45 for the three buildings. And then we would like to get started with phase one as soon as possible, so we would expect construction to start here as soon as we get all of our zoning and items in place, as well as our permits.
I have a question. Will the employees that you employ here, will they be undergoing any sort of background checks or anything along those lines?
They will, and I think that'll be a question for Mr. Black. He can probably address that better than anyone. So, Mr. Black, are you able to respond?
Yes, I'm here, Robert Black with Missouri-made. And we, we have to have, each one of our customers, each one of our employees has to have a work permit, a work card, which includes a background investigation and a photo ID that they will use to access the property through fingerprint or card access entries. So yes, everybody has a background check, and they must be vetted by the state of Missouri.
I have a question. This, Bob. You had mentioned at the commission meeting earlier, or I don't know, it seems like forever ago now, but can you talk a little bit about, is this your first rodeo in doing this? Or have you done, Brendan, can you shed some light on all your past experience in doing?
Sure. Primarily, for many years, I'm a real estate broker developer, and I started in the hotel casino business, which is a highly regulated business, very similar to these kinds of operations. So those licenses were granted to the people that had that kind of expertise here in Nevada. So we were one of 45 people that were awarded a license in 2014, and we've been operating since then. So we operate two dispensaries, a 20,000-foot grow, and a manufacturing facility in Las Vegas. And very familiar with lots of the operations that we have learned, both having been involved in it ourselves and found over the years. A lot of people that have been in this business that we hired originally told us some things that flat weren't true. We've learned a lot about it. It's very sophisticated in terms of its watering systems. We don't waste any water. Everything we do is hydroponic, so it's fed just the right amount. It's all done through what's called fertigation systems, which you guys are familiar with, I'm sure, back there. And the, the access to the building, as I said earlier, is highly securitized. We can tell if someone gets within a few feet of the fence or the gates. We have cameras all over the property, both inside and outside. And again, everybody's approved and badged and carded by the state of Missouri. So we've been doing this for about six and a half years, and quite successfully here in Las Vegas, up until the COVID virus kinda slammed everybody, but things are getting along back to normal, we're opening back up now, so. But even during that time, we've had the grow going, so everything is going along good here, and we've had no problems, no issues. We've learned a ton of things, and we're hopeful to get approved and be good neighbors and operate well within the rules and regulations of both the state and Grain Valley. And I'm gonna thank you all, and especially Mr. Trozen and his department for their serious work. We've been there and had a lot of conversations with police, fire, and the building department, and we're looking forward to starting as soon as we get approval. So thank you so much. Answer any more questions?
Thank you.
And I'd like to just clarify that we are seeking approval subject to all five of staff's conditions. And as Mr. Black said, that staff's been, Mark and the entire city staff have been really great to work with, so as per the staff report, all five conditions, that's how we are seeking approval. I know tonight is just the initial reading, public hearing and discussion, but here again with the engineer, and we have our architect. So if, if anyone has any questions, you know, feel free to ask.
Anyone else on the board have any questions?
Yeah, Mayor, this is Shay, I just have one question. And first, I'd just like to say, Mr. Black, I take it that you're in Las Vegas from your comments there, so I'm glad that you chose Grain Valley from all the way out there in Las Vegas, but I was just wondering what the hours of operation and, and days were going to be?
It's, it's 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Okay, I kinda figured that, just wanted to ask, thank you.
Thank you.
And Alderman Stratton here, going off of Alderman Bass, how did you choose Grain Valley?
We wanted to be strategic. We wanted to be close to Kansas City and on a major freeway. And also, we tried to find a smaller community where we wouldn't hopefully have a great location off a freeway where we could move around, obviously, and somewhere where we could kinda find a spot that was secluded, and we'd be good neighbors, which is our primary view here. And we like the situation there, and we think it's well-located, so we picked it, because we figured nobody, we called it kind of a sleeper. We think it's a great spot to be, and it's a good community, and we wanna be a good neighbor, and we didn't think anybody else would pick it, and we were pretty right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the board have any questions? All right, as this is a public hearing, we'll go over if anyone has, wants to speak publicly for or against this project. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak for or against? Jamie, do you see anybody? Take that as no, all right. So we will close the public hearing then. You good, Jamie? Okay, all right, closed public hearing, move on to ordinances then.
You want me to start, Mayor?
Sure.
Mayor, I move we make the first reading by title only of Bill B-20-09.
I have a motion from Alderman Headley to make the first reading of Bill B-20-09. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman. Any discussion? Talk about it.
Say, it's just based off of the public hearing, so.
We're gonna have something. All right, all right. We have any discussion then? Seeing none, all fair please say aye.
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 All pose same sign. Six zero, so now we'll read it.
Hey, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay, this is Bill number B-20-09, and ordinance changing the zoning on approximately 3.1 acres from District C2, General Business, to District M1, Light Industrial. Mayor, I move we accept the first reading of Bill 20-09, bring it back for a second reading by title only at our next meeting.
I have a motion from Alderman Headley to approve Bill B-20-09 for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten, any discussion? Hearing none, all fair please say aye.
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 All pose same sign. All right, six zero first. Move on to the next ordinance.
Mayor, I move we make the first reading by title only for Bill B-20-10.
I have a motion from Alderman Headley to approve, or to bring up Bill B-20-09 for its first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Alderman Totten, I heard. Any discussion?
This is just the first read, based off the public hearing we just had for the, the cultivation facility.
Anyone have any? Hearing none, all fair please say aye.
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 All pose same sign. Bring it up now for.
Okay, for first reading, Bill number B-20-10, and ordinance approving a conditional use permit to operate a medical marijuana cultivation facility. Mayor, I move we accept the first reading for Bill, Bill number B-20-10, and bring it back for its second reading by title only at our next regular session.
I have a motion from Alderman Headley to approve Bill B-20-010 for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten, any discussion? Hearing none, all fair please say aye.
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 All pose same sign. All right, six zero. Next item be resolutions.
Mayor, I move we accept resolution 20-29.
I have a motion from Alderman Headley to approve resolution R-20-29. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman West, any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, one of the many maintenance programs that Public Works staff does.
Mayor, members of the board, one of the many maintenance programs that public works staff does on a yearly basis is the valve exercising program. So, this is for fire hydrants and just for water valves. But basically, each valve will get exercised or, for lack of a better term, basically being turned so they're not frozen up every other year. If you remember back to budget time, we had put in for a new valve exercising machine. One of the things that we run into is a lot of the valves are actually on property that's, you know, actually landscaped and grass and things like that. So, this one will have actually a little bit longer reach than the one that we currently have, which should lead to less damage. We had budgeted 18,000 for that, and staff has gone out and got bids. And this one actually is coming in a little under 16,000. So, we would appreciate your approval of that purchase.
Anyone have any discussions or questions? Hearing none, all fair, please say aye.
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 All post same sign. B-60 passes. Next up, city attorneys reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, my name is Jeff Dean. I'm one of the assistant city attorneys. We also have with us tonight Kelly St. John, who's an associate, just joined our office. And she's here by video, and we're getting her acclimated to all of our various cities. So, you may see her from time to time and may see her work. She's been a very good addition to our office. She comes to us as a law clerk for Judge Wolf of Jackson County. So, she brings a wealth of experience in government law and hearings for the litigation side of things. So, we're happy to have her on board. Also, I wanted to remind the members of the board that due to the COVID issues, we've had to reschedule our city officials' trainings, which should be taking place right now. However, we've gotten some rescheduled dates, and we'll get out a flyer to everybody as soon as the last date is confirmed. But right now, the NPR facility up in Independence that we normally use for our first one will actually not be until July 31st. Our first date will be June 19th down in Rich Hill, if you want to get down that way. And also, we're going to have one June 26th in Lawson. So, and then, like I said, in July, we'll drop back to NPR's facility in Independence. So, those will be available for anybody's use if you want to come by and see what's changed. There has been a fair amount of COVID stuff, obviously, going on. So, we may have a few things to say about that. But I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of those change of dates. Other than that, we have nothing further for the report, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Tennessee administrator and staff reports.
Mayor, members of the board, Mr. Trozen had his written report for community development that was emailed out to you, and then Mr. Davies has an update for you.
Mayor and board, just real quickly, with the COVID-19 pandemic that we've all been experiencing, we've had a bit of an impact with our Parks and Recreation Department as far as operations are concerned. I think the only thing that we have actually accessible and open to the public right now have been trails and open green space. Our community center has been closed. That's how our playgrounds, our shelters, our restrooms, athletic fields. So, we've been in the process this last several weeks, just trying to put together reopening plans. Myself, as well as Eastern Jackson County Parks and Rec Directors, have been developing plans that we've submitted to the county health department for review for each of these park facilities and amenities. One of the more pressing items right now is youth baseball and softball. And as you all know, I usually give an update in April on what our numbers look like as far as participation is concerned. And up to this point, we've not been able to start the season. With the recent plan that the county submitted in phase one, youth sports is not allowed. So, we're trying to hold on as long as we can and try to provide a spring, summer baseball and softball season to our youth. But again, it's all kind of dependent on what our health officials tell us and whether or not phase one gets extended or what phase two looks like. So, every day, we're responding to emails and phone calls to those that are registered. We have our updates on our website and try to provide those when new information becomes available. But again, I think the next week or so will tell us a lot. And our biggest challenge is going to be, even when we can run youth sports, is the social distancing, minimizing the numbers of kids on the field at one time, sanitation and disinfectant and so forth. So, there's a lot of challenges with that that we're trying to work through. There's been several communities, surrounding communities, that have canceled their spring softball and baseball seasons, and there are some that are holding on like us. So, we interleague with certain communities, and some have canceled. Some are still participating. So, we've got to stay in touch with them as well as we move forward because our programs rely on the share play that we have with those other towns. And also, you know, here in a couple of weeks, normally, we would open up our aquatic center, and that's another thing that we're looking at right now. I doubt that we'll be opening up Memorial Day weekend, especially with the gathering restrictions. It just wouldn't be financially feasible for us to do so. So, we're trying to take a look at that to see when the number of people or that threshold gets to the point where we can feel like we can open up. So, those are the two things that we're looking at right now and trying to figure out when and if we can offer them.
Hey, Shannon, real fast, if somebody is requesting a refund on softball and baseball, are we giving that to them now, or are we holding on to see what's going on?
No, our response has always been that, and we've had, I don't know, probably a couple of dozen kids that have been refunded. Parents have said, you know, even if you do end up playing, we're just not comfortable with our little one participating. So, we immediately will start the refund process. So, yeah, we, for the most part, those that have contacted us have held on and are hoping for a season. But again, it's ultimately going to be the safety of the kids and looking at those risks involved, that's going to dictate what we end up doing moving forward. But, yeah, we will refund now or when and if we cancel, it'll be a full refund.
Hey, I guess just adding on to that a little bit, it seems like things kind of change on a daily basis. But we'll try to keep you as the board updated as we get information. And then Theresa and Sarah are doing a good job of getting everything out on social media as fast as we get it to try to keep the community updated. I know it can be kind of frustrating at times. But also with the restrictions that are still in place and not knowing what phase two is going to look like from a numbers perspective, as far as gatherings are, May 27th, remember, it's the 27th, not the 25th because of Memorial Day. We're still going to hold that Board of Aldermen meeting through Zoom. So, the hope is that the June meetings, we can be back at City Hall to have the Board of Aldermen meetings. But the next one in May will still be a Zoom meeting. That's all I had, Mayor.
Okay. Next up then is Board of Aldermen reports of comments. Alderman Bass.
Sorry, I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Alderman Cleaver.
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Headley.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alderman Stratton.
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Totten.
Nothing at this time.
Alderman West.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Next item is mayor's report. I will just let you know that if you're confused by the phase one and stay-at-home orders and all that, then you're not alone because Ken and I are on calls weekly about that, and we are as confused as anybody because we'll be told one thing probably tomorrow, and then by Thursday, it'll be something else. I mean, last week, I even had a meeting yesterday on Mother's Day at noon because they were changing stuff again. So, just, you know, let's follow along. We update Facebook as fast as we can, and sometimes we'll update it, and it may already be outdated by the time we get on there. So, we're working through it. I know they're looking to make some changes probably to phase one, to open some more stuff up. So, and I hope to do phase two in another, at least two weeks, maybe three weeks. So, we'll keep everyone updated as we get that. That's all I have, and I don't believe we have a need for an executive session, correct?
Correct.
So, unless someone has something else for regular session? Anybody? All right, we will adjourn then. Everyone stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.